Hello, Julian. Hello, Gretchen.
How are you?
Good. I didn't get the memo. I'm in the office. I know, I didn't. It's been one of those days, you know?
Okay, all, we are live streaming to YouTube.
Great. And again, how are we doing on Quorum?
Need double check.
One, two, three. Hi, Janice. Four, hi Cecily.
I'm here. Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
Cecily, Reggie, Gretchen, Janice, Julian.
We have five. And we need...
I'm letting Demetrius in now. We need six.
If six does it. With one minute to spare. I like it. I like it.
How everybody doing? Hello, everyone.
Greetings.
Hello, Demetrius.
Hi there.
Yeah, do. Hey, Julian. Hey, Janice.
You didn't say hi to me.
What's up, Reggie?
You didn't say hi to me either.
Reggie, I didn't see you. You know, I didn't see.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we hear you. I am...
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you. Yeah, can you hear us?
No one can.
Yes, we can hear you.
What's going on here?
Yeah, we can hear you.
According to my clock, it's 5:30. Once we know Aaron is with us, I should start.
Let's try this again. Hello?
Yes.
Hello.
Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, I just turned ninety. There we go. Okay. That's what it is. Give it one second.
So, believe it or not, I'm down the hall from you, Aaron.
Why are you there?
I'm in Denise Jackson's office because I somehow forgot it was virtual, so I came. I rushed in.
So, come on in here if you want to.
No, this is fine. Denise put a fan in front of me, so you know, I'm appreciating the air, so. Okay, so I think we're gonna start. It's five thirty.
We also have a new commissioner with us.
Yes. Good, good. So, the meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:30 PM on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I am an African-American man wearing a gray suit and a gray turtleneck. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Cora. Julianne.
Present.
Demetrius.
Present.
Cecily.
Present.
Janice.
Present.
Kimber. Maggie. Maggie?
Sorry, I was on mute. Present.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Carla. Hector.
Carla's here. I'm promoting her to panelist.
Okay. Gretchen.
Here.
Good. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, dcarts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's central meetings calendar at opendec.gov. The meeting is being conducted remotely via the Zoom platform. The meeting is live streamed on the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to make in the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nkotshank and the Paskatwe people. We pay respects to their elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here, no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. I'll now move to approve the minutes of our December 16th, 2024 meeting. I trust you've had a chance to look at the minutes, and if we are ready to approve them, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second? Second?
I second.
Great, thank you. So, the meetings are approved. So, Happy New Year, 2025 to everyone. We have a somewhat busy agenda for today, so I will labor in it, but I thank you all for being here. I thank you for joining in another calendar year with the Commission. Our fiscal year started back in October, but welcome to another calendar year of the Commission. Today's presenter is Anthony Lee Lay, I'm sorry, Anthony Lay, one of the Creed curators of the current Vagabond exhibition that's currently on display in the CAH I Street Gallery. And I had a chance to look at it as I came in today, and it's really impressive. So, Anthony, please.
Thank you all for the time. Yes, I'm Anthony Lay. I've been a DC resident for fifteen years, benefited from many CAH grants. And so, here to talk about my latest grant, which is the Art Exhibition Grants. We have our, with my partner, Philippa Hughes. We have formed a group called Vagabond, and so, we presented this exhibition, Fifty Years of Hope and Ha-Has, which is the DMV's first Vietnamese-American art exhibition. And it's just such an honor to showcase the talent that is here right in our community. And 2025 marks the fifty years of the, since the end of the war in Vietnam, but also how we all must live on, and the community lives on, the community continues to dream. And so, all the artwork from the over twenty-five Vietnamese artists really provides counter-narratives to war through joy, catharsis, comedy, there's visual arts, poetry, music. There's so many beautiful ways to celebrate the community. I think yesterday at the Eden Center, which is in Falls Street, Virginia, there was a section of Wilson Boulevard designated as Saigon Boulevard, which also just honors the local community there in this beautiful way and in this year. And so, we had the opening on the sixteenth, and over two hundred people were there. It was really joyous. We had a sound performance by one of the artists. We have multiple events coming up. January 25th, we have a poetry talk. February 8th, we have a zine talk. March 1st, we have a musical performance and closing reception, so I hope that everyone can please attend, see the art, you know, engage in it together, and I think that this way, we can uphold the community, again, not as only a fifty-year timestamp from the end of a war, but a reminder that we must live on, we must care for each other, we must be in community together, and think about how we can all dream together. So, CAH has been such a huge asset and resource. The funding is amazing. Michelle May Curry has been amazing to work with, and so, if I had any more dreams to add, I would just have, you know, ask for more unrestricted funds for artists because artists are there to dream and think of new ideas. And so, by having that institutional support and the financial support, we can all dream new things together. So, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And for those who have not seen the exhibition, run, do not walk over to see it. It really is an amazing piece of work, so we thank you so much for that. And remind, you said it closes in March? When is the closing date?
The closing is on March 1st.
March 1st. So, get there before March 1st, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to our public comment portion. Actually, today, we have no one signed up for the public comment. Still, the Commission really welcomes your comments. They're very important to us, so we encourage and invite our constituents to sign up for the public comments so that we can hear from you in this way. There are many other ways to hear from us, hear from you as well, so you can always come into the office. We're all very reachable, but the public comments portion of this meeting is important to us. With that, I'll go on to the executive director's report. Aaron?
Yes, I'm Aaron Myers, the executive director. I'm an African-American male that is bald. Well, as we learned in our staff advance yesterday, the honest truth is that I'm bald Dean. But I'm bald with a black jumpsuit on here. The staff updates are as follows. We have two new grant management specialists who will be starting at the agency on January 27th. So, our vice chair is happy about that. Tiani Veronato and Benjamin Wills. We have also posted an opening for the procurement analyst, so that's to help in our finance department. So, if you're interested, details about the position can be found on our website, dcarts.dc.gov. Training. CAH has been in an in-office staff advance that started Wednesday, January 22nd, and will end tomorrow, Friday, January 24th. As a note, all staff are being reminded to complete their yearly Board of Ethics and Government Accountability Training as soon as possible. And as an aside, as a part of the training, we held our exercises yesterday where the staff were able to identify challenges that we were dealing with within the agency, and we began working immediately today to address many of these said challenges. Point by point, as the beginning of conversations, and we had some action items that can start, that will start as soon as tomorrow, others next week, and we've kind of broken them up from things that are ongoing, that we're already addressing, like the Salary Equity Study and our upcoming meeting with DCHR regarding that on Monday, to things that we can do in the future with HR around promotions, positions, education, things of that nature, bringing in our people relations specialists to deal with things so that we're aware of sexism and biases, to make sure we get in front of these things, but we wanted to make sure that the staff felt heard today, and I was very happy about this. And some of the challenges that we saw, we also saw in our our survey that we did, the staff survey we did last year, which helped us in understanding why we needed to do our staff advance today. So, I wanted to give a hands up to the staff for feeling safe enough to be honest and true and for us to work together through those solutions. As far as grants are concerned, we won't be having an official grants update today. The grants committee did not meet, but the grants division is now completely relocated to the space at the building's front entrance. Reggie, I think you've already been in there. I would like to remind applicants to please review your information and diffs to ensure what we have is accurate and up to date. If you have any questions, please reach out to your grant manager and check the CAH website for information on when trainings will be given. Our team has been examining new grant management systems. At our February meeting, we hope to report our next steps and timelines regarding this. So, at the encouragement of our vice chair, we're going to make sure this happens. And my goal is to make sure that we are part of the success of this. The oversight hearing, if we can put these calendars, these dates on our calendars, the performance oversight hearing for CAH is tentatively scheduled for March 6th, and the budget oversight hearing is scheduled for April 10th. We will soon begin preparations for performance oversight, so everyone should be on the lookout for those emails with questions addressed to your divisions. Just so commissioners can know, I'll be sending out like a type of rubric or a checklist. So, if you want to meet with your council member or council members, we can go through that. I'll first go through it with our chair and vice chair, so that before we share that out. Vagabond Exhibition Launch. Last Thursday, CAH launched the DMV's first Vietnamese-American art exhibition, Vagabond, that celebrated fifty years of resilience for the end of the war in Vietnam. Thank you and congratulations to our guest curators. We heard from Anthony just earlier, that's who presented, and Philippa Pham Hughes for being awarded the grant from CAH that allows him to display these awesome works in our gallery. Public art will have more in one exhibition, have more in one exhibition in their presentation. Poetry Out Loud, this is something that I'm always excited about. I want to remind our commissioners and those watching, the Poetry Out Loud is scheduled for Saturday, March 15th, 2025. The location we are currently considering is Planet Word at 925 13th Street Northwest. Anyone interested in participating should contact the agency's Arts Learning Coordinator, Andrea Brown, at A-N-B-R-E-A dot B-R-O-W-N three at DC.gov. It's AndreaBrown3@DC.gov. And Strategic Plan, the team has been working to present the new fiscal year's updated RFP to the Office of Contracting and Procurement with a 120,000 threshold for procurement. We've, that's already been presented. We were alerted on Friday that the RFP should be published at some point. I would say this week, but I'm, we're still waiting. Once published, we will work with OCP to finalize a vendor contacting official onboard site review panelist. Additionally, I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Kim, who has agreed to serve on the panel and may have already been reached out to, but if not, should be getting some information from OCP. As we work further with OCP, we will keep you updated. That is my report. The last thing that's not in my report, and I negated to place this there, we have been meeting with, we put together a Go-Go Committee that our chairman has been a part of and Commissioner Demetrius Butler has been a part of, and we have, I'm not going to say ambitious plans. I think we have some plans that not only can do some good things, but I think are possible. And so, our team now is working on a timeline that we can get to that committee and to the commissioners, so we can see when some deliverables can be seen. And I believe outreach has been made, or at least I requested it to be made to the people we've met with who testified a few months ago, so they can know about the progress that we've made regarding Go-Go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions, please feel free.
Yes, any questions? Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Before we go on, I did a little shout out to our new commissioner. I'd like to do a little bit longer shout out to, and welcome Maggie O'Neill to the Arts Commission. She is no stranger to the Arts Commission. She's quite known in the DC arts community and the art scene and been engaged with us in many, many ways. We're delighted to have her on board, and we're delighted to get her on one or two of our committees. So, Maggie, soon, we will be asking you, where would you like to serve? Because we can certainly use your help. So, thank you and welcome. I don't know, Maggie, if you want to say a few words?
Just that I'm very excited to be, to be in community with you guys and to be as helpful to the, to the city and to moving the ball forward in so many big ways, which it sounds like you guys have already gotten started and warmed up. And it was really awesome to just be able to witness Anthony talk about his work. I'm very familiar both with Anthony and Philippa and Anthony's partner anyways. That, it's wonderful to see it in action, so happy to be here.
Great. Welcome again. We're delighted you're here. Move on to the Finance Committee. Is Kimber here? Or is Brandon going to present?
Do we know? Brandon may be on. I'm not sure. Is he on?
Brandon is on.
I'm here.
Brandon?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. We can.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I think we were just getting promoted to as a panelist. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Happy Thursday. My name is Brandon Saunders. I'm an African-American male wearing a black and white striped sweater. And while I think that we can have the report available a little bit later, I think there was a little bit late submission. And what we did, we were able to meet as a finance committee. It was a small, mighty two, but we did have some numbers overall to just to present out that probably are a little bit representation than what the normal tables and graphs essentially show us. As of January 13th, that represents about the quarter mark overall at our agency. We're actually on pretty good track, spending twenty-three percent of the Personnel Services Funds from the admin side and as well as twenty-three percent, well, percent from the non-personnel services side. I will note that that is obligated, which is just essentially stating the beginning part of the purchase order. The purchase order is beginning to be established, funds have been committed, and it's making its way down the process. So, of course, twenty-three percent, that's roughly a quarter of our overall budget, so we're pretty much on track for that as we progress throughout this fiscal year. Some other numbers that, since it is the quarter mark that I just wanted to kind of highlight, we did share, we did some, we did some research in comparison to the previous year, again, in terms of obligated funds. And we, overall, but the grants is sitting at fifty-eight percent obligated overall in comparison, especially where we've had some drastic increases just in terms of expended dollars. So, that is actually budget that's spent, grantees getting paid. We really made vast improvements on the GOS and the Neighborhood Arts programs in comparison to last year's. So, before, I will shout out my colleague Martine, my teammate, for doing this research. We paid out four point four times more funds for GOS than this point last year and almost two times more for Neighborhood Arts programs overall. That is accreted to some of the changes from a policy standpoint, but also utilizing this in a more technical, technological fashion, excuse me, overall. And so, so I'm happy to, of course, share that. We're still in the beginning stages of actually this transformation. And that's also just a reminder that if there's still any inquiries or still any things like supplier information, to please still contact, of course, your grant manager. So, thank you all for having me join you all this evening.
Thank you. I see that Kimber is here. I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Kimber?
No, I thought Brandon did an exceptional job. I was hanging out with you guys, but I was just not in panelist mode. So, Brandon and I were ready, but we were not. We weren't called up just yet. So, I do think just highlighting what he said, just, you know, we paid out, what, four, more than four times of our funds?
Four point four.
Four point four, and then almost two times more for Neighborhood Arts in the same period of time as compared to last, last fiscal year. So, just some good progress and I think amazing evidence that the process is working. So, great job, Brandon, for that summary, but some good, exciting progress.
Good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, I want to, we want to shout out Martine on our team. Before our previous resource allocation officer left, he suspected, he stated that with this new system that we all call diffs, he thought that there's a possibility that we could batch, you know, do some batch orders here and see if we could get some grants possibly processed quicker. And Martine came on board and, working along with Brandon and his team, they devised a new protocol of how we get these grants passed through so that we could get the money out to the community quicker. They worked with grants, grants trusted that particular process because it was a different process, but they trusted that process, and that is the result that we're seeing. And we feel that we will be able to maybe double down on that in the post-award cycle as we go forward. And resource allocation will be working with us as we choose a new grant management system to make sure that we can keep that success going.
And I just wanted to punctuate that because a combination of the communications team's work, the events team's work, the resource allocation team's work, the grants team's work, we have more people aware of us and the opportunity for grants, more people applying for grants, more new grantees, moving through the process faster, never fast enough, of course, I get that. There's always someone who didn't get their money in time and the process wasn't right for them. But certainly, huge improvements over time from where we started, certainly when I started as Chair of the Arts Commission. So, again, my congratulations to the whole team and those that support them as well. I don't want to get ahead of you, Gretchen, in your grants committee report, but know that we feel the difference in the way that we are approaching our work and serving our public in the way they need to be served. Please keep up the good work and let us, through automation and technology, find a way to make it yet faster, yet easier for the team. So, I just wanted to make that point. But thank you.
A round of applause. Virtually.
Good.
Thanks, everyone.
A round of applause. Now, back to work.
Yes, of course.
Lots of work to do, but every once in a while, you have to pause and recognize where you've come from, even though there's a distance still ahead of us. But it's important for us to do that and to thank each other and to thank you for the great work. So, with that, any questions for finance? Thank you, Brandon and Kimber. So, we'll go to grants. Gretchen, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Wharton, black glasses, platinum hair, black female. Welcome, Maggie. Maggie and I go way back. So, really good to see you on board with us here. I don't, yeah, I don't think there's a report to put up, but I'm going to talk anyhow. We may not have an official report, but grants always have something to say. Opening soon, we have our General Operating Support Grant, our East Arts Grant and Projects, Events, and Festivals programs. They'll all be opening the first week of March, and there'll be information on our website about that. We're happy to report significant progress in our grant agreements. Nine hundred fifty-four out of eleven hundred and fifty, that's eighty-four percent of our grants have been fully executed. We've established purchase orders for eighty-three percent of our GOS grantees and fifty-six percent for our fellowship grantees. And we sincerely appreciate the patience and the grace that's been provided. There's been a lot to work through. This is a cumbersome system we're dealing with, but we're certainly also putting a lot of effort into making it easier and better for our grantees, and we're working diligently to do, get a completion rate of a hundred percent. In case, for those of you who are listening who have missing documentation, please, please, please call your grants managers. If you're unsure about what required documentation you need for your agreement, please reach out to that specific grants manager directly, and they're happy to assist you, and they actually have hours, and you can make an appointment and come in and talk with them. That's it for today.
Thank you. Any questions, comments to Gretchen and the team? Again, you know, thank you to everyone for all the great work you're doing and this great progress as well with the same staff. We should recognize that, you know, with the same staff, we push through more. Now, these additions that Aaron talked about will help make life a little bit better for everybody. Public art. Carla?
I'm here.
Great.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the commissioners. Welcome, Maggie. I want to also thank the public arts team. We've had, we had a meeting last week, and we have some exciting things happening that I want to invite Karen Miller to go over in detail. She's pulling up the report here. Karen?
Yes, hi, everyone. I'm Karen Miller, a white woman with clear glasses and brown hair, and I'm wearing gray and black today, and I have the privilege of leading our public art team here at the Commission. So, I have a few things in the report that I will go through. So, just overall, the public arts team has been very busy with existing programs and grant lines as well as researching and developing new work areas, identifying opportunities for growth and enhancing existing efforts. This includes planning for a new five-year public art plan, attending to much-needed conservation and maintenance efforts around the collection, and exploring ideas for new programs that would be responsive to community needs. The team has also been working with the Department of Public Works to try to relaunch the Murals DC Program. An additionally, the public art team is exploring a possible collaboration with the Department of Energy and the Environment around a possible artist-designed license plate program. That's something that's still in its infancy, but in the future could pave the way for CAH to develop its own license plate program per the existing code around that. I also wanted to give an update on our Art Bank program. So, grant administration for the Art Bank program is moving forward, and a majority of the grantees are in the invoicing stage. The team is ahead of schedule compared to FY24, like others mentioned. And the team is also working on a new acquisition survey that will be piloted with this year's Art Bank grantees. That survey is to help the team craft and improve upon the records that we have available about, about the artists whose works are in the collection. So, the next thing I have in there, it'll be the third time mentioning, but I think it's worth, it's worth underlining as much as possible. So, the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant. So, all three curatorial teams are moving forward on their exhibition projects for our gallery. And we had our first opening last week with Anthony Lay and Philippa Hughes with Fifty Years of Hope and Ha-Ha. So, that information is there. We're lucky enough to have Anthony talk about the show a little bit at the top of the meeting, but there's a lot of really robust upcoming programming that we would love to invite folks to. The next thing is the Color of the Curb School Safety Program. So, the FY25 cycle for Color of the Curb launched on Friday, December 13th. This says currently there are two submitted and five in drafting, but I know we have several more now. That's due February 3rd. We've already done two workshops around that for... We've already done two workshops around that for potential grantees with a third scheduled for January thirty-first. So Deirdre Darden, our team lead on it, is currently confirming participation of the review panel. We're always looking for a commissioner convener, so if folks are interested, we're happy to talk more about that particular program in which murals will be placed in curb extensions outside of or nearby schools to improve pedestrian safety and slow traffic. So that's a really special partnership that we do with the D C Department of Transportation and D C Public Schools. The next thing is some efforts around our collections management and the Art Bank Loan Program. It's maybe not always the most visible thing that we do, but it's a really, I think, unique and important aspect of what we do. So we're, the team is currently managing nineteen open requests through the Art Bank Loan Program. The program continues to be in really high demand, ranging from new agency loans, expanding additional artwork in office spaces and then deinstallations and relocations of current loans. One thing that I wanted to highlight was an installation that the team did last Thursday on the sixteenth at the Department of Health, D C Health and Wellness Center, which is the only D C government-operated clinic that provides free H I B and S T D care and treatment services. And so we're working, Ron Humberton and others on the team are working to do a, a public event in collaboration with that, with that office, which will provide more information when we have. So in December, C H was able to host a successful dedication for the sculpture at Cooper Garden Park, that was December fourteenth, with artist Chris Tusemas. And so we were able to have former A N C Commissioners, the family members of Lillian Gordon, Commissioner Wharton attended, C H staff, and then representatives from D C Water and Parks and Rec, as well as community members were able to attend. Just a couple, couple other things, very, very robust activity happening. So in terms of mapping projects, the team has been working to develop some preliminary plans and researching ways to map C H's public arts collection over the next few years. And that will happen in tandem with our e-museum archive. So this is, this is very early stages, we're researching sort of what's out there, what's being, what's been done in others, in other cities or jurisdictions that's been successful, but this will take time and resources. But we feel an important thing to do. The Public Art Building Communities grantees, we have three this year, which we've mentioned at previous meetings. So each project is moving forward and they're navigating the normal sort of public art things around permitting, maintenance, planning, site selection. You know, bus remapping, you know, there, there's all kinds of things that happen with, 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 with public art projects. The other thing that I'll mention is we're getting ready to, to relaunch the request for applications for public art building communities. And one of the things that the team is considering is developing a cooling off period of one year to create more opportunities for new applicants. And then the final thing is Kerry Kennedy and our team, in concert with others at the agency, have been working on an emergency preparedness management survey. And I think this is vitally important, given, you know, the floods in North Carolina, the wildfires in California, thinking about preparedness, so there's a survey link there and would love help spreading the word about gathering this important information. So that's all I have.
Good, busy. You're busy, thank you, thank you. Questions, comments from the commissioners? Thank you, Carla and Corinne.
Thank you.
Cicely, Idea Committee, I have a little blurb from Grace, but I don't know if there's something you wanted to say, Cicely?
Oh, no, just the, the blurb is fine, we've, we've got some, some real work cut out for us considering our new president, but we're going to save that after we talk with the committee to see how, how, how we're, how we're actually going to be moving forward considering, you know, what's going on.
Exactly, exactly. So yes, in, in February, we'll hear more from the I D A Committee, I D E A Committee and where they're going. But my personal view is we want to have a highly productive, highly engaged, high-performing organization. And we understand that diverse points of view and skills and capabilities brought to the table in the right sort of way produces the best results. And so we don't have to use other languages that other people use with the notion of let's get the best people working on these problems and these projects and these programs in the most harmonious way is the way to do the best we can for our constituents. And the idea committee is going to work through, how do we get that done in spite of political winds at the moment? Is that fair to say, Cicely?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, we just have to have the right wording so that
Exactly.
we're doing, yeah.
We have to stay in compliance.
Exactly.
Stay in compliance, and we want to stay in compliance. So thank you, any other questions, anyone, because that was just a little blurb on I D E A. I know Hector's not here, is someone here to present the Art Education Committee update?
There was no Art Education Committee.
No, they're on a, every three, every two or three months, so this is, this is not that much to report.
Good, great, great. So I think we're down to the Special Committee reports. And the only one is the Art Week D C Report, which I will give. The final version of the strategic plan for Art Week D C has been delivered and will be reviewed first within the team, C H team and the commissioners, and then distributed to our constituents. And yeah, there it is, it does exist. It is just as exciting in its final, final form as it was when it was reviewed last week, last month, rather. Last month, we held our culminating stakeholders meeting at the Gallup Building. It was a very informative session and literally hundreds of people attended, either in person or virtually. So all the people who had participated as stakeholders for us before were invited and more than most attended and it was a lively presentation. There was real excitement, I mean, genuine excitement in the room around Michael Kaiser's proposed plan that came from a multitude of interviews and market research, et cetera. Stay tuned as we proceed towards a twenty twenty-six launch of Art Week D C and perhaps something of a soft launch in twenty twenty-five, you know, I have to put that in there. Against all views, I'm going to put it in there. But if we're not ready to do anything meaningful in twenty twenty-five, we will not do it. But if we can, and, and the room from last month encouraged us to do that if it was a good presentation. But certainly we are preparing for a real launch in twenty twenty-six. According to my notes, I have no unfinished business and no, and no new business, but I should ask any questions, comments on, on Art Week D C?
One, one thing, and just so the staff who's listening, we'll be meeting with the staff to get feedback from the staff as well, so that we can incorporate that. The chairman has been very adamant about that to make sure that this doesn't seem like a top-down situation. We've heard from the community, we want to make sure the staff is heard from as well. So and this has been sent to our events team as well as our Corinne Miller, who's over our Director of Public Arts as well.
Yep, and again, let me just reinforce that, so when I said that it's going to be reviewed internally first, that's exactly what I meant. That the C H staff will review this first before it goes out to anybody and, and review it and make whatever revisions we have to. That's the first one I want to make. The second point is, we are committed to not overloading the staff with any responsibilities around Art Week D C that are not doable by the staff. So please don't read the staff as, oh my God, we've got to do all this stuff. It will all be done, it will not all be done by the staff. There'll be other entities that'll be involved as well. But, but the role that C H will play in that will be determined in conversation with the staff. So, so please be excited about it, but don't be nervous that it's now a, a lot of work being put upon you. But it is, it is an exciting project, it will be, it'll do so much for both D C artists and for Washington, D C in the same way as Art Basel Miami has done for Miami. So look forward to an exciting plan that will be aligned to the staff in a way that makes sense and is doable and doesn't overtask anyone. Any questions?
Something to reiterate, Reggie, we actually have a plan.
Exactly.
There is a plan, like this is, we're not thinking about it, we don't, we have a plan for action, which is amazing. So and we have, it's been tested and looks like it could be possibly tried with us, so I'm excited about that.
Great, great. So with that, I'll go back to the agenda, no unfinished business on my agenda, no new business. So there being no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held Thursday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty P M. The time is now six oh seven P M and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
You guys are out here early today, Reggie, thank you.
Well, you know. I try, I try. I try. People don't mind coming to meetings when they think it may actually end early and they know it'll end on time, so.